Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to go ahead and start the meeting of the Pennington County Planning Commission, July 10th, 2023. And we're running a little bit late. The recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on July 18th, 2023, at 10:30 a.m. And as I usually try to tell everybody, it's also a specific time that planning issues, it may not be exactly at 10:30. First thing is roll call. Mike Lewis sent us that he and his wife are on a trip and he would not be attending today, and everyone else is present for the record. You take it from there.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thinnison, Assistant Planning Director. The Planning Commission elects new officers during the first annual organizational meeting in July. This is where you'll elect the new Chair, Vice Chair, and the Second Chair.
Okay.
And we'll open it up for nominations.
Yep, you may go ahead and do that. All right, it's open for nominations for the standing Director of the Planning Department today. The nominations can be for individuals, we also can vote to just run with the same officers if that's what you like. That's your options. Nobody wants to nominate? We're all leaving town, right?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Since I'm not a regular member on here, I was going to allow somebody else to do that, but since I haven't heard anybody, I would make a motion that continue on with the elected officers that are currently serving.
All right, it's our second. Moved and seconded to have it, the existing officers retained. Just for the record, I believe Mike is Second Chair and you're First Chair, and I'm the Chair, just for the record. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Jason. We're going to get you up here in just a few minutes anyway, so you might as well. Approval of the June 26th, 2023 minutes. Have you all had a chance to review that in your agenda packet? Chair would address a motion.
So moved.
Moved and seconded to approve, as submitted in the agenda packet, the June 26th, 2023 minutes. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Same statement goes for the approval of the agenda as submitted in our agenda packet.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda as submitted in our agenda packet. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Onto the consent agenda.
Morning, Gink Commissioners. Following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on. All items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, staff member, or an audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. Agenda item number four is conditional use permit review 83-01 for Gerald Schulke to review a recreational vehicle park. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit 83-01 with the property owner's concurrence. Agenda item number five is conditional use permit review 17-16 for Schoolhouse LLC Larry Tuber to review a vacation home rental. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 17-16 with condition. Agenda item number six is conditional use permit review 17-18 for SC Meridian LLC, also Larry Tuber, to review a vacation home rental. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 17-18 with conditions. Agenda item number seven is conditional use permit review 17-19 for SC Meridian LLC Larry Tuber to review a vacation home rental, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 17-19 with conditions. Agenda item number eight is conditional use permit review 18-16 for David and Karen Maudlin to review a vacation home rental. Staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit 18-16 to the July 24th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. Agenda item number nine is conditional use permit review 18-17 for James and Laura Rogers to review seasonal bunkhouses on the subject property. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 18-17 with conditions. Agenda item number 10 is conditional use permit review 19-09 for Martina Powell to review a single wide mobile home to be used as a permanent residence. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit 19-09 as it's no longer required. Agenda item number 11 is conditional use permit review 19-10 for Jeff and Jody Segrew to review a multiple family dwelling in suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 19-10 with conditions. Agenda item number 12 is conditional use permit 19-14 for Dottie Pugsley to review a multifamily dwelling. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 19-14 with conditions. Agenda item number 13 is conditional use permit review 20-04 for Schoolhouse LLC Jessica Ginger to review a vacation home rental. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 20-04 with conditions. Agenda item number 14 is conditional use permit review 21-22 for Elizabeth Nade to review a vacation home rental, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 21-22 with conditions. Agenda item number 15 is conditional use permit review 21-30 for Thomas Boyce and Lynn Behr to review a vacation home rental, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit review 21-30 with conditions. Agenda item number 16 is conditional use permit review 21-36 for Larry and Ramona Vanderzy to review an accessory dwelling unit. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 21-36 with conditions. Agenda item number 17 is conditional use permit review 21-44 for Michael and Jean Wagner to review living in a recreational vehicle while building a single-family residence, and staff recommends to end conditional use permit 21-44 as the use is no longer needed. Agenda item number 18 is conditional use permit review 21-47 for Lindcamp LLC to review a vacation home rental. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 21-47 with conditions. Agenda item number 19 is conditional use permit review 22-03 for SC Meridian Larry Tuber to review a vacation home rental. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit review 22-03 with conditions. Agenda item number 20 is conditional use permit review 22-04, Schoolhouse LLC Larry Tuber, for a vacation home rental, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 22-04. Agenda item number 21 is conditional use permit review 22-23 for Susan Murray to review an accessory structure as a primary structure on the subject property, and staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 22-23 with conditions. And lastly, we have agenda item number 22, Minor Plan Unit Development Amendment Review 21-08 for Todd and Tina Warkentine to review setback for a garage on the subject property, and staff recommends approval of the extension of Minor Plan Unit Development Amendment 21-08 with conditions.
Thank you, Jason. Does the Commission have any item that has a clerical error that exists that they found? Okay, hearing none. What about the staff? Any desire to pull any? Commission. I'd like to pull number 14. From the audience, anybody from the audience want to have an item pulled? All right. Then the Chair would address a motion for the consent calendar with item number 14 pulled.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar, items four through 22 with item 14 pulled. Discussion. From the audience or the staff. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Good morning.
You and I spoke prior to the meeting on 14, and it's really a simple one. It would be my suggestion, we're kind of updating our fire pit things to a two condition, and you have number four in there, so we'd have to add one condition to add the other condition. Is that all right with you?
Yep.
Okay, I don't have any problem with that. And the Chair doesn't move very often, but I'd move to approve that with the proper wording of the two-stage condition on fire pits.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve number 14 as submitted, which is conditional use permit 21-22, per staff's recommendations with conditions. Discussion. From the audience. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 23.
Good morning, Christine Phillips, Assistant Planner. Conditional use permit 22-23 to allow vacation home rental on the subject property. The applicant owners are Doug and Jackie Bog. I thought they were going to be here.
They are on Zoom, I was notified. Yes, thank you.
If you have any questions for them?
Thank you, Christine.
Location is 253 Brenner Pass, lot size is 1.26 acres. Zoning is suburban residential, and there's no flood hazard on the property. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the Planning Commission may consider in their review of a conditional use permit. The applications are, or the findings are shown on the screen. There were no major concerns or comments received in departmental review. The staff did perform a site visit on June 27th, and staff recommends the approval of conditional use permit 23-22 with all conditions.
Questions for Christine. Item one, your contacts got to be getting close to the mileage limit that we had in our ordinance.
Close, she actually lives-
But I don't know the, I can't tell you that I know the location specifically of this unit.
And she lives actually more towards that area and towards the Deadwood direction, so she's within there.
Okay, because I just saw Nemo was a long way away. That's, what she's doing is that's her mailing address.
Correct.
Okay. I don't have any problem with that then, thank you. Anything from your applicant? Jackie?
Yes, good morning.
Would you like to say anything before we?
Just thank Christine for helping us through the process, thank you.
All right. Anyone else here would like to speak on conditional use permit 23-22? If not, Chair would address a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of 23-22.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve, per staff's recommendation, 23-22 with 16 conditions. Discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So, I was living in that area at the time that this development started 50 some years ago, and this was actually the one development that I'm aware of that was originally designed to be used as a vacation home rental if that was the desire of the owners of the property. So, I certainly support this.
I agree with you, Gary. The, not, I think it was the first ever to mention vacation home rentals in any paperwork, and the original developers actually put wording and sales related their sales to the availability of this option for use in their property.
Right.
Anything else? Anyone from the audience? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 24.
Thank you.
Morning, Gink Commissioners, Jason Thinnison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item number 24 is planned unit development overlay 22, or 23-06 to allow a recreational resort. The applicant is Horse Creek LLC, the agent is Garrett Kuchenbecker. Location is 23570 Highway 385. It is 18.07 acres, currently zoned commercial district. This item was heard by the Planning Commission last month, it was continued to today's meeting. So I'll just give you an update to what the applicant's done so far. He is working with the state right now to get approval of his septic systems that are on that property. As of today, we don't have approval from the state for the septic system, so staff is recommending to continue this to the August 14th Planning Commission meeting to allow him time to coordinate that with the state. He also has some tie downs, he needs to put on some of his park models that are within the flood plain, so the continuance will allow him to take care of that as well.
Question for Jason.
Jason, so does he continue to do business, or does he not do business until this is?
He has tailored everything down, and I don't believe that he is renting those out right now, the ones that are on the affected systems. He's been working really closely with his staff to get those down to acceptable numbers that we've calculated, so we have a pretty high degree of confidence that when he goes to the state that he'll get that approval.
Okay.
Just for the record, that is a difficult property, and I'm sure they're doing a lot of dancing to try to find good elevations for the septic system. That is a difficult property, and I actually kind of appreciate him doing, or the owner doing that.
Yeah, historically, that's been kind of a troublesome property. The previous owner made a lot of concessions to get the uses on that property, the new owner didn't know that, so we've been kind of catching him up on things, and he's been more than cooperative with us, so.
It's a longstanding facility with a lot of history with locals and people in my age group and younger, so I look forward to this thing getting handled and that they go on, so I wish them the best of luck on it. Chair would address a motion, per staff's recommendation.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve, per staff's recommendation, to continue planned unit development overlay, PU 23-06, the August 14th, 2023 Planning Commission. Discussion. From the audience. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to 25.
Agenda item number 25, Ordinance Amendment OA 23-09, to amend Section 103 definitions, to amend and supersede the existing Section 103 of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. I think this was something that was kind of long overdue in our office to just go through here and revamp all these definitions and add some that were probably lacking before. I don't know how you guys want to do this, if you want to go line by line, or if you have any specific questions for me.
Questions for Jason. I've got one. Page three, just a recommendation on the automobile repair shop, and I would probably include number 11, and it looks to me like it'd be more inclusive and better handled using motor vehicles, but because then you'd be including motorcycles, trucks, and heavy-duty equipment. Because I didn't see any other reference to that. Then it did have a question farther along. Oh, page seven, number 37 down at the bottom, just equipment, do you really want contractors, or are there other types of storages that you wanted to find? Maybe it doesn't fit that one, I don't know. We try and get a little too specific sometimes.
Yeah, it's a, we've had those requests come through, and a lot of the contractors that have applied for CUPs call them lay-down yards, things like that, so we just need to try to narrow it down to something that's more or less universally used, I guess.
People could have other storage yards though, too, couldn't they? They might not be a contractor, they might be a wholesaler, and they're just putting pipe or supplies out in the yard, too, was what I was thinking.
Could be, we typically want to-
Just a thought.
Yeah.
Then on page nine, number 51, says family, and it starts out an individual, but I question whether that's a family, but if you read through that as an individual, I don't know. It's hard to be related by blood then, to more than one. Number 53, family daycare, looks like they're expanding into more people looking after the elderly, too. Maybe that's something we should be looking at.
Yeah, so we addressed those further up.
Do you?
Under, I think it was caretaker and caregiver, so the caregiver would be that sort of situation.
And I noted that you didn't put family in there, although the caregiver, a lot of times, is a family member, but whether we wanted any special notation in that, and I think that's it, Jason. I tried to read them, actually, oops, I got another with a question mark. Oh, I just had, especially working on the vacation home rental, short term on 20, 180 consecutive days is, I just, whatever the state, doesn't the state have a definition on that, too?
You said number 20?
Yeah, page 20.
Oh, page 20.
And that came to mind that I thought the state had a, so that ours would coincide with it. That was, and I just, question mark, I don't know what the state's is. It's item 135.
Okay, yeah, that was just short-term uses is what we were looking at on that, not specifically the vacation home rentals, is just short-term uses.
Yeah, I just meant that I thought the state has a short-term rental. Oh, I see what you're using, short-term, doesn't mean rental.
Yeah, just short-term.
Ah. Oh, I read an extra word, and you're flying through with your grade.
Conditional use permits being short-term.
I stand corrected? Thanks, Jason. I didn't have any other, does anybody else have any others? Chair would address a motion, per staff's recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve, per staff's recommendation, Ordinance Amendment OA 23-09. Discussion. From the audience. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to number 26.
Agenda item number 26 is Ordinance Amendment 23-10, to amend Section 900, road improvements and design standards of the Pennington County subdivision regulations. This really came about for the subdivision regulations, variances that we've had concerning road districts during plating. It's kind of, it was a gray area for us, does the Board of Commissioners have authority, or is it a road district? We just wanted to put some verbiage in our subdivision regulations, kind of, under what conditions does the Board of Commissioners have the authority, and I think we did a pretty good job.
Questions for Jason. Having lived on a road district for over 20 years, it's almost scary when I read it, because our road district is under what you guys call a lot of, it's existing but not compliant. I mean, there isn't even area designated, because it's that old of plat, it was before planning and zoning existed. To bring a road up to a specification that would fit, it would have to actually be done from scratch. So, that one concerned me, it really looks big, having served on a road district board for 20 years.
Kind of the, some of the intent behind it was to get some of these road districts that basically don't enforce any kind of road improvement standards to get them to adopt something, yeah, so when they're levying their taxes, that they have a standard to bill to. That way, when we're subdividing property in that neighborhood, we're able to enforce some standard of road improvement, because in the absence of it, there's nothing.
See, we don't, and you might want to take this into consideration, we don't levy either on ours, never have. We had two members that were difficult to get to pay even before we had a road district participate, and because of that, we do it by special assessment, which then they have to pay first before they pay their taxes, so they don't want to be on who's who in the gutter.
Sure.
Listing in the newspaper that they didn't pay their taxes, so that's why we use special assessment and have since we've been in existence, so. I'm just saying, you may hear more about this. It's a, it would, it caught my attention right away. It's difficult, and especially when you're in one where we had plating, it's not truly platted where I live. It was done by the county commission individually, there's, I believe there's 320 acres and it's like 16 different lots, 15, something like that. And it was done before, and then the road was kind of existed on its own, right by the stream, so everybody just went with that, and that's our road district now. But I look back, and because of that, it would never happen now, the road itself was never designated, and the auditor, you know, is aware of this, who has to direct us to be a good road district. There isn't any even right-of-way through there, other than the existing for the last lot that what is under law, where you have the, been continuous use for 20 years or 30 years, that's the only thing that protects the last. So, this, for older ones, this could, might be a big, big thing, so, just bringing it up.
Charlie, are you an organized road district?
Yeah.
You are, so you could do an opt-out if you wanted to levy.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we could.
Do you know how many road districts in Pennington County don't levy?
I don't know.
Boy, I know when I was in the auditor's office, there were a number of them, and then we had a real wet year, and they were all real unhappy that they hadn't levied.
Right.
So Jason, on the last line, not sure I quite understand what that's leading to, says the road district or township must be active and established prior to a request for subdivision of property within its, within its boundaries.
Right, so we're looking for that road district to be established at the time of plating, not to be in conjunction with, so if they're going to apply to be a road district along with plating, we want to see an established road district there with the established standards to road improvements.
So that has been an issue, hasn't it, then?
It has, yeah.
Yeah?
It was an issue, though.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So how do they recor actively do this?
Typically, the way that we see it is the road district is already, or the parcel being subdivided is already within a road district. Now, if you have a larger subdivision that's plating multiple lots off, and they're not currently in a road district, and they want to create their own, that's a situation that we're not wanting to see, and at that point, we would have our subdivision regulations, ordinance 14, apply, so that we would make sure the road improvements are done to county standards.
Okay. Thank you.
You used to list it as a condition, didn't you, in your?
Well, it's a requirement under the subdivision regulations right now.
Correct.
That they be improved to county standards.
That they had to have a road district, and it even started if it was just the developer themselves, they had to do all the filings, right?
Yes.
Okay. Very good, any other questions for Jason? Chair would address the motion.
I move we approve ordinance amendment OA twenty-three-ten as recommended by staff.
Mr. Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve, per staff's recommendation, ordinance amendment OA twenty-three dash ten. Discussion from the audience. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried, on to number twenty-seven.
Agenda item number twenty-seven is ordinance amendment twenty-three dash eleven, to amend section five-eleven fees of the Pennington County subdivision regulations. I guess that should be zoning ordinance, sorry about that. Uh, this was something that we felt was long overdue as well, I think it'd been fifteen years, thereabouts, since we updated any of the fees, um, in this section. Specifically for conditional use permits, things like that. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, have you all had a chance to review?
Mm-hmm.
They don't seem to me to be out of the, uh, it's, on your sign, I guess the only thing I had, the five hundred percent, uh, is that installed?
Yeah, we're working with County Highway right now, as far as the road signs go.
Yeah.
To get those actually created at highway and posted.
So the folks that need one understand that it has to be installed through a certain procedure?
Right, yeah, because we've had problems in the past where people have come in and just created their own signs, they don't meet the height requirements. They don't meet anything, any of the requirements that we have for them. So just to make sure they're done right, uh, we just coordinated with County Highway to come up with that fee and that's what the cost will be.
Just to throw in, there's state and federal requirements that you're meeting by doing this.
Right.
Yeah. Any other questions for Jason?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Move approval of ordinance amendment OA twenty-three dash eleven?
Or a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve, per staff's recommendation, ordinance amendment OA two-three dash one-one. Discussion from the audience. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Yeah, let's see. Twenty-eight.
Agenda item number twenty-eight is the county board report. The board of commissioners consulted with the planning commission's recommendations from the June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three planning commission and comprehensive plan amendment twenty-three dash zero-five and rezone twenty-three dash zero-eight for Pink Cabin LLC. And these items were approved.
Any questions for Jason on the county board report? Okay, thank you, Jason. We do have someone from, Kristen Bennett, you want to go ahead and...
I don't have anything, oh, sorry.
Please introduce yourself, just for the record, and then go ahead, Kristen.
Kristen Bennett, um, I'm a short-term rental owner, resident of Pennington County. And, um, just speaking on behalf of the newly formed and forming short-term rental association, I thought you all would like an update, what's happening. It's always chaotic when a, an association is starting to form. And I wanted to clarify a couple of things, first of all, that, that the Black Hills group is a separate group from the state association, which, although I live here, I'm more affiliated with the state group. So that might seem a little confusing, but, um, there is, uh, right now, a bunch of Facebook groups, right? And they're all doing separate things, there's a Sioux Falls group, the Aberdeen group, Pier group, and then a pretty active Black Hills group. And the state association is, um, not going to separate itself from any one group, but wants to make clear that we're not representing any one group. This is a collection of counties and departments and people participating in Facebook groups. So, um, we put out a call for people to officially associate themselves with the state group. And, um, at the first call out, eighty-eight individual people joined, which there's no fee to join right now, it's just kind of putting your hand in the air to say like...
Can I ask, was that the Black Hills group? Was the eighty-eight, or was that all of them?
No, this is, this is why I'm saying it's separate. Um, this is a separate state association that is formalizing to kind of, um, differen, differentiate itself from the Black Hills.
So it was the state group?
This is the state group, yep, so these are formal state numbers. So we gave about a three-week, you know, register to kind of be counted, be involved, or at least know what's going on. So it's around eighty-eight right now, and I thought you might want to know that, um, about half are from the Black Hills region. Um, another, doing some numbers here, I would say about, uh, another twenty are from the Sioux Falls southeast area. And then the others are from small counties, Marshall County, where my dad has a rental, um, Pier, West River, nobody from the northwest. Um, I also thought, yeah, I'm happy to share this information, but that the association is kind of off to a more organized start now that we've kind of separated from what can be sort of a chaotic Black Hills Facebook group to what is actually incorporated as a state association now. We are part of a couple of national networks that can provide really good guidance, what has worked well with other states. Um, particularly Nebraska has done some really interesting statewide legislation that just clears it all up so the counties don't have to do this one county at a time and just flounder maybe for months or years, right? So we're kind of looking to streamline this for everybody. Um, it's still, I'm getting put into more of a front seat than I planned on, um, and that's because I'm kind of semi-retiring from my real job. And it kind of seems like a lot of other people who we're gonna help are either not being helpful or helping in, in not a productive way. So, um, we do have a, a new board, um, slate that's gonna be elected in. Um, you're familiar with Jessie Drury, she'll be involved from the Black Hills area, myself. Um, three people from Sioux Falls, um, one person from, I think it's the northeastern part of the state. So a little bit more organized, um, diverse board of directors that'll represent multiple counties and see what's working in Sioux Falls, what is working here, so Sioux Falls can benefit. What I want to put out is that, um, and I'm happy to provide updates anytime, so the, um, email address that'll come to me anytime anyone's, anyone wants like a membership roster or anything. It's a state association, you know, transparency is important, and, um, the email address for me is info at S D dash S T R A. That stands for Short-Term Rental Association. Um, and you can just email me, we can exchange files, there's nothing that's, you know, top secret going on here, this is like a cooperative effort. The next thing that we're gonna do is form an advisory committee. And this will be not voting board positions, not a heavy lift, but it will include, um, representation from someone from Department of Health, Department of Revenue, the governor's office of economic development, and then we hope someone from each county, or at least counties where, you know, short-term rentals are prevalent. Um, either from a planning and zoning department or a commission who can provide, like, this is right, this, just an advisor, in an advisory capacity. So we'll be putting out that call, I'm just kind of starting with state departments, so they can tell the state association when something is on the mark or off the mark and we can help all these counties and residents know what they're talking about with advice from people who really know. So, um, we're not there yet, but, um, that's kind of the next step. And the goal really is to create more cooperation and easier flow for everybody. Other states are doing it, so there's no reason South Dakota can't do it, too. Especially when you look at like Nebraska, like neighboring states that are culturally not that different from us, um, really kind of getting some things organized. We're not Florida, New York, California, so our focus is kind of partnering with, um, states in this kind of midwestern area.
I have a question, do you know how to access the Nebraska legislation that they've passed? That would be interesting to see.
Yeah, I would be happy to send that to you. Um, in fact, we had someone kind of fill out a membership form from Nebraska who I think is involved in that. And, you know, as we go to ask South Dakota legislature to come up with some guidance, you know, so this can all just be a little easier for everyone. And, and I'm not standing here saying this is all about the short-term rental owners, this is about communities, the volunteers, the commissioners, just for all of us to have less gray hair over this whole thing. Um, we will tap into those people from Nebraska, what did they do, how did they do it?
Mm-hmm.
When they pass legislation, we should not have to rewrite it all if they've already done it and they can cooperate with our legislature to say, here are some guidelines.
It would be nice to take some of the requirements off of our table and, and, and have them in state law, so that would be interesting to see.
When you have the law, it just kind of clears up all of the subjectiveness, you know, you can just objectively say, this is South Dakota state law, but none of those laws should be performed in a vacuum.
Right.
Purely to serve short-term rental owners or purely to serve opponents of rentals, or that's why we're looking for the advisory committee, the board is diverse. Interestingly, of the eighty-some submissions, all but five say they intend to keep growing their business, because we collected a little bit of like, what's going on with you? So this is not gonna be getting any easier. Um, this is the right time to kind of, if you're gonna grow your rental business in South Dakota, here's what you need to know about, you know? And then, of course, counties still have autonomy over whatever, I just thought you'd like to hear an update.
Kristen, can I, would you, you said that you could provide at least some type of roster or membership roster, could you get that to Jerry for us? That helps us, this is timely.
I know.
And, uh, we review representation, I mean, people have petitions, it, it's similar, we've got, I mentioned to Patrick one, uh, that I was certainly interested in what the roster was, uh, the locally one, that I didn't consider a roster, two hundred and eleven, I believe, was the number I used hits on a site. I don't consider that. But from what you're saying, when they do reply, certainly if eighty-eight of those showed on the state level and half of them were the hills, then certainly people are going to make it a permanent relationship, and that helps us when we're reviewing those things.
Right, and it's sort of like, you know, there may be a Black Hills chapter that forms independently. I'm gonna keep myself separated from that so that I can kind of work on this multi-county, because that's where my expertise lies. And if I get involved in both, I'm in conflict of interest, looking out for my own property here in Pennington County and looking out for how, you know, Patrick feels or Robert feels or Jessie feels. So I'm really gonna probably not be involved in the Black Hills group, not that I don't care, but just to keep that separation there. So, um, so I'll be going to Sioux Falls, meeting with those folks, going to the governor's office, and just want you to know that I'm here as a resource. Um, and the website, we're keeping it kind of quiet until it's a little more organized, but it's there. And it's there for you all to post anything you want about what's happening in Pennington County, same with Sioux Falls, Aberdeen Pier, um. I don't know just how much work I'm getting into, because right now, this is all on a volunteer basis, but as we get going, I might hire a helper to help kind of just disseminate the information. Jessie's mom, Becky, I think her name is Becky Drury?
Yeah.
If I could.
Kevin.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I could, um, first of all, thank you for bringing this forward, it's, it's nice to hear. Um, I would like to know what your outreach is to, like, the local committees? We got the short-term rental committee working in the Black Hills today, I'm sure other counties have some of those recommending committees around. Are, are you inviting them? And then also, how is the general public, um, there? I know that a lot of short-term rentals or vacation home rental people keep in, in the loop on all of these kind of things. But there may be some public, um, input that should be there.
Yes.
And so, I, I know you said you weren't, um, promoting a lot of advertising at this moment until things are a little bit more established. But, so looking into the future, how, how do you plan on addressing it statewide for public input, um, into that, um, organization?
That's a great question.
Kevin, I, I gotta wade in here a little bit, there's a limit to what we can ask a person that's coming forward on the public. In other words, you told us this is preliminary, and, and I understand, and, and address it as you see fit. But this isn't truly testimony on something that's before us, in other words, you're volunteering whatever information. So I want to make that clear before you answer.
Right.
Normally, questions are very limited of those that come forward, uh, on, on a public thing, and it should be, because it's not true testimony other than what you want to put on the table for future.
Sure, so I can tell you what we've done so far and what I would like to do next, that, um, so far, it really just reached out to the Facebook groups of all of these areas, all of them I could find, and said, here's a link to a state association. And the Facebook groups tend to be kind of closed, though, like rental managers only, right? But this state association is open to anyone to kind of join and be informed. So I don't have a mech, a mechanism yet to spread information about this association, but I would love it if the individual counties would. So if, if there is a way I can do that, we don't have an email list of like, except for the Black Hills region, though. For example, Jordan, he's a member of the Facebook group, right? And so he joined because he got the link to the state association application. I would be interested to know how we can promote this to all the counties, staff and commissioners, so they can join in a special category called, you know, community, whatever it would be. Commissioners, advocates and staff or something. And then maybe a separate category for, um, community and homeowner to, to give input. So there're gonna be different levels of membership. Um, we don't quite have that all figured out yet, how we're gonna promote it, but the website is public, that is open to everybody. Um, and so far, I, you know, just put it out on my personal Facebook page, but as we get involved with the governor's office, I would assume Department of Health would be able to put a link that says, you want information as a homeowner, are you concerned about this? So we could probably get some links with states and maybe counties that would drive people to the website.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I was looking for the ideology of what you were thinking about moving forward, so thank you for expressing that you're open to whoever's wants to participate in this, Ken.
Yeah, yeah, and associations shouldn't operate in a vacuum if it's gonna try to create efficiency. So, you know, it should never be at loggerheads with a homeowners association, or it should be looking to build consensus, right? If you're gonna try and get something done, especially in the legislature. You kind of need to, there has to be give and take. And, um, so, you know, I'm open to all ideas, I didn't expect this to turn into a, a full-time job, but I'm willing to help get it off to the right start. And, and really, that's not, um, the right start for a state organization. There's a code of conduct, what will and won't be tolerated, um, bullheadedness, lack of, like, you can lay out code of conduct and people can be removed for just being, you know, non-productive. So we'll have some of that, too, and that goes both ways, you know, there are rental owners and public members that are making this hard for everybody, so.
Thank you, Kristen.
Yeah.
I want to clarify, just for the record, you know, people watch us.
Yeah.
And I want to clarify for the record that your organization has not solidified yet, and your comments are the best. and your comments are the best possible at this point in time and that if it should solidify and somebody heads in a different direction from what you spoke, it's not underhandedly being done. You're trying to come forward and inform us so that work kept up to date. And that's all I wanted to do by the other comment. I was concerned that when we're being watched, people think this is verbatim, but you are not an agenda item, you volunteered and came forward and tried to update us.
Correct.
Thank you.
If, this is semantics, but the organization is solidified with, it has a federal ID number.
Oh, I meant about the members and rules, yeah.
Yes, yeah, we do have.
Or directions that you're gonna have.
We do have a set of bylaws.
Yeah.
We will develop a code of conduct and, um, roles of membership, but there are bylaws in place that govern who can do what and how. And right now, I am speaking on behalf, Jessie Drury will also be someone speaking on behalf. Um, anyone else that speaks on behalf right now, you know, wouldn't, might be speaking on part, on the part of a county group or something, but not on the state group.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to clarify so that those that are listening, some folks don't watch, they just listen, so.
Right.
I wanted to make sure that you're still open and ready to operate.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to appear anytime you want me to for updates, but sometimes I don't even remember there's a meeting until, you know, the night before, so otherwise I would have put myself on the agenda to give you this update, so.
Thank you, Kristen.
You're welcome.
Items from the staff, building permit report.
Sir, so I think, uh, you all were provided a copy of the building permit report. Uh, you can see, it's like single-family residents, if you compare it to last year, at this time we are down, um, quite a bit. Um, seems like things have shifted though because a lot of people are building accessory structures, uh, either garages or sheds or carports. Uh, those are up significantly since last year. Um, yeah, that's, that's about it unless you have any questions for me.
Questions on the building permit report, Jason. Thank you, Jason.
You're welcome.
Items from the membership. Um, Vacation Home Rental Committee, um, the update for the commission, uh, has, um, moved, uh, and reviewed and done some modifications and some, um, new considerations and did it all by motion, so you have a right to review it, but it is headed back towards our direction. Right now, it would appear, uh, if the mailing or the publications and whatnot are right, it'll be July twenty-fourth maybe, but I don't control that. It's based upon what we can do for publications, so people do know that it's here and back for review. Uh, just for your, um, um, what would I say, knowledge, we have two items left on the motion that we had on the table, then we would proceed, I assume, uh, based on the commission's thoughts, uh, to review the ordinances, our draft ordinance as submitted. So we have two items, uh, which is, uh, density and others. And a couple of you are already noted, a couple items you'd like to include in the others and I would assume we'll kill, uh, get those out of the way or addressed before we, uh, move on to the review of the ordinance. Anything else, questions?
I have a question for Jason. It, this is a state thing, but it puzzles me why on, when we're approving vacation home rentals, the state has said it's okay to have, say, six people overnight, but twelve during the day. That seems kind of counterintuitive because at nighttime, everybody's sleeping anyway. They're probably not using water and that sort of thing. And then in the daytime, you could have a whole family reunion there, so you could use a lot of water and stuff. It just seems odd. I'm not really asking for, for an answer, but it has always puzzled me.
I can take a stab at it, it'd be the best I could do. I think that they account for people utilizing the showers maybe and the washing machines. Um, that's the best I can come up with.
It's just kind of odd.
Hmm, a good point.
Yeah.
Any others from the membership? Hearing none, chair would address a motion to adjourn.
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move in second to adjourn the, um, what's the, the, the tenth, July tenth meeting of the planning commission discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, we are adjourned.